I will call to order the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education. Today is September 9th, 2014, and I would like to welcome back my fellow board members from their summer vacation, and I hope you had a very, very healthy, safe, and restful vacation. And also to our students, Mallory and Brian, welcome back. So, and we know that you just jumped right back into, into school, so, good. With that, we have recognitions. Mr. Curtis.
Excellent. Thank you, Lydia. We have this evening Georgia Austin. I know how you love attention, so we invited Georgia here this evening. Georgia was our Teacher of the Year nominated by her peers here in Simsbury, and as part of that, I guess, responsibility and honor, Georgia had to speak at convocation. And we had several interesting and engaging meetings over the summer where Georgia tried to convince me that this was not necessary.
[laughing]
And see maybe if we could team up, do our speeches together. I take part, she takes part, but she delivered really a wonderful message at convocation for the staff. I really think it was inspiring. Georgia talked about the fact that we need to see beyond our classroom walls, and we really need to think of ourselves as educators and not just teachers, and we need to take that extra stretch and really connect with our students and connect with the families and everybody that we service. And I think it was really, for me, a meaningful speech, Georgia, and I think for everybody else in the audience as well, so I thank you for that. Georgia teaches kindergarten this year at Central School, and last year was at Squadron Line School, so a transition for her, and I know Ms. Hennessy, the new principal there, is extremely happy that Georgia came over to Central. So we wanted to recognize her for her wonderful efforts and how she represents our teaching staff here in Simsbury, so congratulations, Georgia.
I really do try to get out of public speaking, so you can go put the fire on. But thank you very much for having me and recognizing me for this wonderful honor. It truly, it's amazing to work in Simsbury. I wanted to share with you all, though, one of the messages that, one of the two messages that I delivered at convocation, which was that I'm representing excellence in Simsbury not because of who I am, but what I've become having worked in Simsbury. And one of the things that I'd shown was a picture of Karen, and the Karen, you might have probably seen these on your travels, they're the monuments of stones that are stacked one on top of another, and I tried to use this as a symbol as to how I got to be where I am with the administration, the leadership in Simsbury, the Board of Ed, the support that I've received over the years. I took quite a many years off in between my teaching. Coming back was a challenge, but in Simsbury, I was, the support that I received from my colleagues and the staff and the administration was, it just was unbelievable. But I've also gotten to this place in my journey from parents and students and just everything, working together and just being one entity. So I invited the teachers to take this card to remind them, as well as a stone, to remind them that as they're going forward, working with students, to keep in mind that it's not just the students, it's the students' parents, it's their families, it's their experiences that they bring with them, and hopefully that message will inspire teachers to, you know, do much more than just be there for the moment, but look beyond. So thank you very much, and hopefully.
Do you want to share?
Oh, yeah, thank you. There you go, here's your stone.
Right.
Want another one?
Yes, I do.
Because I'm going to stack them.
Oh, good.
Oh, this looks like a good one.
You can take more than one.
I might.
Thank you.
Georgia, I love the message on the back.
Oh, thank you.
It's such a great message to have out there.
Now, Georgia talked about it a little bit, but what was unbelievable is I had an opportunity to give my comments to the staff, and we were preparing to transition to Georgia's speech, and the fire alarm went off at the high school. So we have 400, 500 people in the auditorium, and now we have to, we have to leave because there's some, I guess, a little bit of late contracting going on and running a power saw, and the dust set off the alarm. So it, you know, trucks came, we had the whole thing, and it ended up being a nice motor break for people. 15 minutes back in, and she did a great job of transitioning back in and really capturing the moment, so, thank you again for all you do. I, you know, when I had a chance to talk to the faculty this year, I talked about, quite a bit, I talked about our new vision and core beliefs, I talked about the strategic plan, but really the fact that. Whoa. Up the gun. Trying to time up the moment.
I was pointing to the meal we presented.
I can't even.
It's not a fire alarm or something that we're having.
We actually talked about the complex times we're in and the fact that we're fortunate to be in a place where we have great teachers, great leaders, and exceptional students. So at the end of last year, we had this idea to go around and actually interview the kids and talk about what makes a great teacher, what makes a great leader, and we showed this clip at convocation, it's about a three-minute clip, and I think it's pretty genuine, and I thought it'd be a nice way for us to kind of kick off the school year, so we're going to show it.
And so with that.
Moving right along.
A good teacher is someone that is funny and caring and can help you get through problems. And I love these things, they are kind, and if the kids do something, they have an award. She lets us do crafts, because they're nice but still strict at the same time. They still let us have fun, but at the same time, they're able to control the class and that give other kids a chance to say what they think even if they have no answer. Does it give you extra time to work?
It can be really interesting without being boring, and every day there's something surprising, something new, and something different, so you never feel bored, because you're always interested in learning.
Someone can be plenty fun, because it's not just like work, work, work.
I work, but they do work, that's hard, because you definitely need that. When you get good grades, you can do good things with.
I really like it when a teacher has a good website.
A great teacher, she, sometimes she tells us when it's a five.
Definitely can ask questions and participate in class discussions without getting something wrong, and they don't shut down your opinions.
No, you have to kind of reason with the kids, you can't really just scream at them and tell them that they did something wrong, and really, everybody's innocent until proven guilty.
That's a lot of great examples.
On Monday, she like said, how was your weekend? That she lets you paint stuff, and she lets you get stuff done sometimes for long times.
If you do homework in class, so you don't have so much. A good teacher is someone that asks me how my day is, every day. When teachers talk about their personal life, if they have kids, like telling us the story about them, or just things that make them relatable in general, and, yeah.
Or he, um. Is always there for you. Thank you for teaching us.
A good principal is, the song makes you feel safe at school.
Someone who's easy to talk to. They interact with the kids, and they show them like things that are right and things that are wrong. We have seven, oh, the parent, during she holds all those. A good principal is someone who always has high new qualities. He's very involved with all the students, he knows everybody's name.
Will try to make you feel better.
A great principal always has a smile on her face. I guess someone who's a pumice. Somebody that really cares about your feelings.
What makes a good principal is that, well, I've never been to the principal's law, but some kind of problem to experience that. I did for all the kids, not just the one that did it really bad or really good. And also, like, principals should have, like, there's like some time when they don't have too much work, they should like go in the halls and like say, like, they interact with students.
So we kicked off with that, and I think it got us moving in the right direction, and thank you, those board members that attended. I thought it was a great start to the school year, and Georgia, thank you for coming out tonight. I know it's a busy first couple of weeks for you, but we wanted to recognize you for the report, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And have a great year. I know it's an important year for you, so.
Thank you.
Enjoy it. Great. All right, with that, we'll move on to public audience. Any one of the audience wishing to address the board may do so, and thank you, Lisa, for attending, and Mallory, we appreciate it. We will move on to Board and the Minister of Communications, and we'll start with Brian.
So the reality that school is actually starting is beginning to set in for teachers and students alike, but I think everyone's looking forward to a really great year. And on that note, I actually have a little bit of breaking news to share. As of about two hours ago, when I checked up Mr. Street's Twitter, apparently the first athletic event of the 2014-2015 school year was a 0-8 win for Simsbury, so yay Trojans.
Thank you, Brian. Susan.
Just to say that having a freshman back at the high school, I thought the orientation process was so good this year. It ran so smoothly. Having a son who gives me no detail, I actually got some information, which was very nice. So kudos to the high school, they did a great job this year. I was, I was really pleased. And, and it's been, he only got lost once, so we were doing good.
Good, good. Wish him well this year. Tom.
The only thing I would report is that Burke and I participated in the annual Fund of Summer event of the Audit Kickoff, you know, so, trying to think exactly when that was, Burke, but I'm hoping you'll spend a couple of minutes in your, in your introductory comments to talk a little bit about where we're headed there.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Tom. Chris?
Lydia, this weekend, as most people know, was the used book sale, Friends of Simsbury Library, and I was there and was approached by Charmaine Glue, who helps coordinate that as a member of the, Friends of Simsbury Public Library. She asked me really, in this meeting, to say thank you to the Board of Ed, but in particular to say thank you to all the staff at the high school, who she said were just absolutely phenomenal at helping them, as well as everyone else that she's interacted with throughout the whole administration. So it was a very heartfelt thank you from her. She said that they have found this to be a great venue, appreciate having access to it, and all the support that they have, so I wanted to pass that along.
Unfortunately, I couldn't be there. Was it well attended?
It was very well attended. The only issue is it was very hot in the gymnasium that day, but it was very well attended, yeah.
Nothing like a hot gymnasium, you find a book. Mike?
The only thing I mentioned is the committee meetings are starting up with some of the things we've got going on. October 1st, I think, is our first facilities enrollment, Task Force Committee meeting in a couple of weeks. Burke and I are attending the Pension Advisory Meeting tomorrow, and we have a, Chris Kelly and I will be participating in the long-range planning committee that the Board of Finance is setting up.
All righty. Tara?
I've got nothing. Great transition to the new year, and great, hopes for a great future. Great year.
Very good. Erin?
We've had a great beginning to the school year, productive, teachers coming back really focused and eager to get started, so you'll hear more about that in the opening report tonight.
Great. Tomorrow night is our first Community for Care meeting of the school year, so it'll be held at 6:00 PM here. It is going to be an open public meeting, and the main agenda item for tomorrow night, Lieutenant Fred, as well as our two SROs, that I'll speak a little bit more about in our opening day report, Officer Cushman and Officer May, will be presenting about what kinds of trends they're seeing in the Simsbury community.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, I guess to audit, try to summarize the stimulating Audit Kickoff meeting. We had a, we had a town and Board of Education staff from the Finance Office, Joe Mancini, and from, from the Board also. We had Kira Sheehan with us, along with Board of Finance member and Board of Education member. And we, it's a good, it's a good annual review of the prior audit and getting ready for auditing this, this year that has just finished. We, we now have the new Finance Director. We're just trying to make sure that, that this audit is very, you know, clear and that it starts a little bit earlier, and we try to get all of the information back to them in a very timely fashion. We reviewed the management comments from, from the last audit, we're making good, good progress on the suggested areas to try to put procedures more consistently in writing, and making, making good progress there. We reviewed a little bit about some of the cash management procedures that were reviewed as a part of the agreed-upon procedures, and so that was a, that was a well-received process, and that'll, that'll help us to improve our controls. So for the upcoming year, we expect them to be here in November, and we've done the preliminary work, so we're on, we're on schedule to get that done before the end of the calendar year.
Very good.
And they were going to come, they were going to come back with us with like a setting up a preliminary meeting as well, kind of come and have an interim meeting, when, when or if that's been set up.
I know we're going to be in touch with them this, this week, so I will, I will verify that schedule.
Keep me posted. Thank you, that was an awesome summary. Appreciate it.
Nothing else tonight.
Beth?
Just two things on the state front. Interesting news to report, you've probably read that Stephen Pryor, our Commissioner of Education, has said that he will step down in November, even if Malloy does get reelected. So there will be an interesting shift at the top. Certainly, there's been a lot of changes, as we've talked about in great detail, on the educational front with new standards, new testing, and teacher evaluation, and certainly, nobody's questioned the value of the work, but the implementation of it and the rate of it has been highly scrutinized, so it'll be interesting to see if any changes or what will occur there. I know that Governor Malloy came out with a statement about 11th grade testing recently in the, in the paper, and it's gotten a lot of feedback from superintendents and assistant superintendents about that junior year in high school and the high level of stress there with the current assessments and what's going on, and to put the smarter balanced assessment in 11th grade may not make the most sense, and it's interesting, it seems like they're open to conversation about a relook at that. So we will certainly keep you posted there, because that would be, that'd be a significant change that I think would potentially be for the good for our students, so.
Good. Well, I'm going to just pee back in next, I just came from CADE. We had our first board meeting of the year, and Commissioner Pryor was there with the State Board of Education, and had talked a lot about, you know, the challenges that, as you know, he's leaving, but he will be here until his last day, but the challenges that we do face going forward with education reform and some of the initiatives, and he did speak exactly about the 11th grade testing, and did speak to us at length about that, about, you know, the possibility of relooking at a lot of the, the areas and the issues that were put forward, and about tweaking and turning and possibly not having the S back for the 11th grade as, as the SAT and CAPS are going to be, you know, morphed into that. So he also did thank, as we were around the board table and representing all four corners of the state, all the Boards of Education, for all their hard and diligent work, you know, and service, you know, throughout his four years of tenure as Commissioner, and, you know, thank CADE and the CAPS and, and CAS for, for, you know, the involvement, because a lot of what has been presented and put through was with the help of, of the Boards of Education, so he, and I, you know, he said to make sure that you extend it to your own Board of Ed, so I said I will, because I was coming right here, so, to all of you, heartfelt thank you for that. Also today, I had the opportunity with a few of us from, from CADE to sit down with Ambassador Tom Foley. We have two days of interviews or rather, you know, just discussion of their educational platform, so tomorrow we'll be meeting with Governor Malloy, he'll be meeting us at CADE, and some of the issues that we're talking about in particular were about funding, common court standards, school security governance, and, and basically general issues. So it will be interesting to hear, you know, again tomorrow, but we requested to have them come and speak with us, since we do represent, you know, Boards of Education from around the state, cities, and suburbs, and small districts, to have them understand what we face back home in our districts as they are out campaigning, so, so that, so that is it.
All righty. We'll move on to recommended actions, and we are on Exhibit 1, and it is approval of minutes of June 10th, 2014, the regular meeting. Do you hear a motion?
Moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
The second has to do with a retirement that occurred after our last board meeting, and that is of Ellen Yasmer, Special Education Teacher at Squadron Line, so I would recommend that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Ms. Yasmer effective July 1st, 2014.
Thank you. Do you hear a motion? Moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
The third piece is some additional district movement of some resignations, individuals, 11 of them in total, moving on to different opportunities outside of Simsbury. The details of those people, as well as their experience and Simsbury assignment, are included in your packet. But at this point, I would recommend that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Lauren Stiles effective June 25th, 2014, Lori Davison, Sarah Foster, Kristin Hempel, Eileen O'Neill, Addie Robarge, and Jaclyn Scalia effective June 30th, 2014, Renee Kluznik effective July 22nd, 2014, Carrie Grotto effective July 29th, 2014, and Mark Cohan and Cindy Parsons effective August 1st, 2014.
Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
The second has to do with a retirement that occurred after our last board meeting, and that is of Ellen Yasmer, Special Education Teacher at Squadron Line, so I would recommend that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Ms. Yasmer effective July 1st, 2014.
Thank you. Do you hear a motion? Moved. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
The third piece is some additional district movement of some resignations, individuals, 11 of them in total, moving on to different opportunities outside of Simsbury. The details of those people, as well as their experience and Simsbury assignment, are included in your packet. But at this point, I would recommend that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Lauren Stiles effective June 25th, 2014, Lori Davison, Sarah Foster, Kristin Hempel, Eileen O'Neill, Addie Robarge, and Jaclyn Scalia effective June 30th, 2014, Renee Kluznik effective July 22nd, 2014, Carrie Grotto effective July 29th, 2014, and Mark Cohan and Cindy Parsons effective August 1st, 2014.
Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All of them, I just want to say thank you for all their hard work, because there's a lot of years, if you add up the years here, we've got multiple bunches of years. Many people worked very hard for a very long time. Thank them for all their service.
Just interesting to see two of the people that, as you mentioned, Sue moved on to other districts, I think four are taking on now administrative roles in other districts that, you know, we talk about teacher leaders and providing people with opportunities for success and makes them viable candidates in other places.
That's right. And then finally, for informational purposes, there's some details around appointments that we made over the summer, people new to our team here in Simsbury, and I'll be going into a deeper delve into who those people are as we move into the school opening report.
Thank you. All right, we are now on to Exhibit 3, Acceptance of Gift from CF to Squadron Line.
Thank you. It's great to start off the year with another very generous gift from Simsbury Educational Enhancement Foundation, or CF. They considered requests and made an award to Squadron Line School, and there's 10 iPads with covers that are going to be able to be purchased through this gift of $4,280, and Simsbury, Betsy is here, who can shed a little bit more light on, on how the, how these will be, will be used, but they're going to create an iPad lab for struggling readers through the Esper program, and we're very thankful and would recommend your consideration of it.
Good. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you for that very, very generous gift in the school year. All right, we are now on to Information and Reports. We're on Exhibit 4, the school year opening report, Mr. Curtis.
All right, so we have multiple parts to this, and Sue will take us off first, Sue, Erin, then Burke, we have our pictures from Burke, which we always are the highlight of our presentation. Save those for last.
The before and after?
Yes.
We love the before and after.
Before and after.
What is that?
Although I am going to show you pictures of the new certified teachers, so hopefully those are a little more exciting as well. But I would just like to put some faces and names together to, again, members of our Simsbury Public Schools team that we have brought on over the summer. So we'll start first at Simsbury High School with Allison Murphy Shea, who's going to be our own pathways supervisor, and that position was taken prior, prior by Eileen O'Neill. So with each one of these slides, there are some credentials, those are also elaborated upon in your Exhibit, Exhibit 2, that I just referred to in Personnel. In addition, Gail Zatrowski, who's going to be joining our Family and Consumer Science Team. From Henry James, we have a new Speech and Language Pathologist, Grace Butkovich, who's joining us from the Chicago area, and Christopher Chan, a Latin teacher, who will be expanding our Latin program to both 7th and 8th grade. Katie Wallace, a new Special Education Teacher, and she's going to be working specifically with students who are served through our autistic program and, and Henry James, at Henry James. At Central School, a new kindergarten face, Casey Foote, she was our most recent hire, I should say, and the Thursday before school started, so we welcomed Casey, and she's very excited to be here, as well as Diana Smith, a very veteran and intentional reading and language arts consultant, who was just recently in Farmington. At Squadron Line, Nicole Dalton, Grade 3, she comes to us from Arizona and heard great things about our district, so we're excited to have her onboard. And a person that we've spoken about, our 2009 Teacher of the Year, Janet Haley, who's returning back to Simsbury as our Ready, Set, Go District Facilitator. I saw Janet in the parking lot of Squadron Line, and she's already telling me everything that she's been doing and has in the works, so we're really excited to welcome Janet back to the Simsbury Public Schools. In addition, Brian O'Gara, who's joining the Physical Education Team at Squadron Line, and Liz Raymond, a Special Education Teacher with various experiences, most recently in Hartford, but we're welcoming Liz back. At Terrifill, a very familiar face that many students were excited to hear that she was coming on staff, Nicole LaFave in Grade 2. She worked at, I'm sorry, at Terrifill as a long-term substitute, and one student in particular, I was talking to a parent, and she said, oh, she was so sorry to hear that this other teacher had moved on and had moved to Michigan, but was doing a little dance when she found out it was Ms. LaFave, so we welcome Nicole to, to our team. As far as teacher experience, this just denotes the number of years' experience, so we have, you know, 58% at six-plus years, quite impressive, and I think even more impressive is the academic preparation of our teachers who are joining us, and certainly, you will note that 83% of our teachers that we hired, of this dynamic dozen, as I'm calling them, has a master's degree or higher, either a sixth year or seventh year, so another impressive statistic about this group. We also welcome these new teachers to a very comprehensive teacher orientation that occurred over three days before convocation began, and certainly, in your report, there are some more details around the actual sessions that were held, but those included a welcome breakfast. We also, this is something that we added in a couple of years ago to new teacher orientation, we have teachers who have just completed their first year in Simsbury come back and speak to the new cohort, and that's been very beneficial, because not often are our new teachers right out of school. We have, as that former slide showed, a lot of experience in the room, but certainly, what does it mean to be in your first year in Simsbury? And that's always really dynamic to hear peers talking with their peers and can speak very candidly about the questions that they have. Erin and I also conducted a riveting session on the Simsbury Educator Evaluation System, but in all seriousness, spoke about how it's around professional development and support for our teachers, that we make very big investments in them all throughout the, their time here at Simsbury, and I think Georgia spoke to that, that, you know, we, we really believe in the development of all of our teachers, and that just does not end when they sign contracts with us. Helen and Christine Golden also did a very comprehensive review of our homeschool collaboration and its importance. Johncia Latwinick, a technology overview, kind of how do you get on email plus, how do you make the technology tools effective resources for your student learning in your classroom? Session certainly on employee benefits and payroll procedures from our team of Terry Heinz and Deb Clark here at the Central Office, and we had Jan here at the beginning of the school year last year for the Board, and certainly would like to have her back, but she really spoke to TEAM, our, the State Induction Program, and met with teachers who would be participating in TEAM. In addition to that, back in the buildings, there were meetings with principals, department supervisors, to really get teachers oriented to the day-to-day practices of their individual buildings, as well as the school cultures and climates that we promote. In addition, we also celebrated at convocation 13 teachers that attained tenure, a really important milestone, a critical milestone in one's teaching career, that shows the hard work, dedication, and resilience, so we certainly. work, dedication, and resilience. So we certainly gave specific recognition of these 13 individuals, and that we're very proud of the work that they've been doing with us here in Simsbury. So with that, to talk more about teacher support and some things that were going on regarding professional development, I turn it over to Erin.
All right. From the Office of Teaching and Learning, the work that we do, it's always great to talk about, it doesn't stop in the summertime. We're very, very busy. It's one of the busiest times. People often ask, what do you do in the summer? Well, there's a lot going on in the summertime. So just to remind you of the summer academies, every year, they get refreshed and renewed, and opportunities for kids, our Summer Arts Academy, the kinds of professional development, curriculum design and development that goes on, and talk a little bit about technology, as well as a mandate that we're facing this year that we have to address, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes as well. So when we think about the summertime, we have opportunities for students in our elementary schools that then can participate in reading, writing, or math, summer academies. And there's certainly more information in your packets about each one of these, but very well attended. They're for students that need support, but also some enhancement in writing for kids that want to take their skills to another level as well. And so we had 15 elementary teachers that participated in that. What we really have the nice opportunity to do, Betsy invites high school students to be teachers in training or partners in training during this, and it's very much appreciated, I think, by students who potentially might be thinking about doing work in education. So 116 students participated in our summer academies this summer. Simsbury Arts Academy continues to expand and grow under the direction of Cindy Rem. In Grades 1 through 3, we had 50 students that participated with a culminating event of Honk Junior. Grades 4 through 12, 130 students that participated in our Simsbury Arts Academy. It's spectacular. Anywhere from visual arts, jazz, theater, all of the kinds of things that kids would love to spend time doing, they get to do that in the summertime, and had got to see the Romeo and Juliet, the young performers' version of that as well. So very well done. And Cindy just continues to do remarkable work with our Simsbury Arts Academy.
Specifically with the fashion design, there's a group from Simsbury Arts Academy right now that are having a show at Body Talk in Avon, and they're showing their fashion designs. And there's going to be a reception, I believe, on the 18th. I'll get those specifics for you. But their work is on display from September 3rd through the 18th, so really exciting at Body Talk.
So when we think about professional development and district curriculum work, I had reported at the end of the year, I had done some overviews and some discussions with teachers about expectations for the work that we were doing this summer. And we had great response from teachers who wanted to participate in continuing to really refine and develop curriculum work over the summertime. We also, at the elementary level, and I'll speak specifically to that, Betsy and I worked hard during that professional development day to get teachers to really talk about their work, what's happening in the classroom, and really have them prioritize the kind of work that they thought they needed in order to start the next school year. They had had an opportunity over the last few years to be bringing new units in, what order they should go in, and more units needed to be designed. So we had some, a lot of work, and Betsy can certainly talk about that, from March to June. So we had a part one, because we have an early release in June, where the first level of work, so that what we want to be able to do is have teachers have that with them over the summertime, so they can review it, refresh their memories about what they're going to be teaching. And so that was in June, that professional development, and then followed up at our August PD Day with the second part of work that will come further in the year. So that was really a redesign of how we were doing our professional development with our elementary teachers, and very well received by them. For the secondary, as I had spoke about, we had done some June PD about the expectations. We had 140 teachers that were engaged in writing some kind of curriculum. We have what we call curriculum maps, 2D maps. We have unit designs that then support that to ensure that we have a guaranteed opportunity for kids, learning opportunities as they enter into their grade levels, courses in the year. What we did do this year, we've sort of done a little bit of it, but not in as refined and defined manner this summer, but a curriculum design team. We're six members. I had three department supervisors. I had Georgia Robert, Mary Ann Salvatore, Sarah Steinacher, and three instructional coaches, Dan Salentano, Angelique Belmonte, and Janice O'Donnell, who were my design team. So any writing that was done over the summertime, we had three sessions, one at the end of June, one in July, and one in August, where we came together and reviewed every document that was written, and we had standards that they had to go through and meet. And that team, their own professional development and their ability to give feedback to teachers was remarkable. And in fact, I met with Jaclyn Petrella and Georgia Roberts today, in which to give them those written documents, so that they can bring it back to the teachers in order to continue to refine those documents. So I think that's something that we're going to continue to expand upon, and I think the feedback is so critically important to ensure that we have high-quality written curriculum, so that we then know when we go out and look that it will be implemented and then assessed. So we're trying to really close that cycle. We always, in the summertime, have teachers that go out for other kinds of professional development. TAFT always holds AP opportunities for teachers that, just to refresh their work. We had two teachers that attended down at Stevenson University in Maryland, Project Lead the Way. You cannot teach Project Lead the Way unless you've been to this two-week course, and so two teachers did do that as well. And then Georgia Robert actually went to Boston around some technologies on writing and implementing technology in the high school classroom. So she's sharing that with her department and trying to expand that as well. So lots and lots of work that went on throughout the summertime. As we talk about technology, clearly what we're looking to do is expand that ready access to technology. What we do know is that kids aren't sitting with technology at their fingertips from the minute they walk into school and they leave. It's really contingent on the learning opportunities and the learning experiences that we set forth for kids, but we want to ensure that it's ready access. We want to ensure that the devices, whatever it is that they need in order to get deep into that content, that learning, those skills, that it's available. So over the last two years, we've provided 1,300 Chromebooks in our schools. They're strategically placed. They're not probably, as you would think, evenly placed, but they're strategically placed at grade levels and content areas in which to then support the written curriculum that we've put forward. Our Innovative Subcommittee, it's a subcommittee that's been in place now, we're going into three years. They are the folks that sort of are the ones that try out various practices and share with other teachers as well, and that has and will continue to happen this year. Our Library Media Specialists, and I really want to speak very highly of the work that they're doing. Their roles are transforming on, you know, a daily basis, and they're taking on more and more of the work around technology and how it's embedded into our classrooms. And they are the go-to people in our buildings. They are critical people. And Johncia has done, Johncia Latwinick has done a very nice job in helping build their capacity in which to be a support to classroom teachers. Security and privacy is always an issue when it comes to technology, and so we're always looking at our policies. We'll be bringing some policies forward this year to make sure that they're up to date and that they are really servicing us and our system in the best way that they can. And we'll continue to talk about that. Probably the most exciting thing that we have, and I would invite all of you, I'll certainly speak about it as it comes closer, but on our full-day November 4th Professional Development Day, we're going to hold our third annual, or we didn't do it last year, but our third technology conference. And we actually have secured a national speaker to be a keynote address. His name is John Bergman. I actually saw him. I was at a full-day conference back in May, and his topic is flipped classroom or flipped learning. He's unbelievable. He's engaging, and so he will do about a 45-minute keynote to the entire K-12 staff. And then we'll provide a small session for teachers. And as the technology conference, you really sign up for things that you're interested in, and he's allotted about 30 spots for teachers to participate in the flipped learning. So we're excited about that, bringing him forward. And then Johncia and her Innovative Subcommittee and her Library Media Specialist, Technology Resource Teachers, as well as many, many teachers around the district, will then potentially provide small sessions or short sessions for teachers. So you'll see the folder when we get it all put together, and would invite you to come see John Bergman at the start of the day, because it's, he's very engaging. So when we, you know, as Matt talked about, we have been struggling over the last few years of just paying attention to the mandates, whether it was teacher evaluation, the standards, testing. This is something that we had learned about back in 2012, that there was a reading survey mandate that would be required of all of our K-3 teachers with particular certification. Every certification has a particular number, and through Sue's office, we're able to identify, but any teacher currently sitting in a K-3 classroom with one of those identified certifications will be required to participate in a reading survey this year. We're trying to assist teachers, make it manageable, and make it fit so that we can get through this. The purpose of the survey is really to inform districts and schools about our strengths and weaknesses and the kinds of professional development that we might need to provide to our teachers. But it also comes with some worries as teachers think about having to sit for an assessment where they might not have done that for quite some time. So there are links. I have a letter that's ready to go out to let teachers know. It's sort of percolating out there. Teachers are hearing about it a little bit more. We did just hear today that it's been pushed back by the state. So our intent was to use our October PD Day to provide teachers some professional development around it, introduce it, a practice test to them, for them to use it, and then sometime in November to then actually give them time to take the administration, which takes, is it a couple of hours to take it? Yeah, to take the assessment. So it's a lengthy assessment, or I should say, survey, that they would be taking. But now, given the email that we received today, we'll look at what that means over the course of the year. We'll continue to, we'll inform our teachers to make sure they're aware of it. They can access the website. They can look at some of the examples. But we may wait for future professional development days in which to provide them that opportunity.
So this had a July 1, this had a July 1 date?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
July 1.
It's now moving, uncertain test of where it will land.
Right.
So one of the things we, you know, we're talking about is, you know, as these shifts come to us with particular due dates, and with our due diligence and wanting to be out front and have a culture of being out front with things, you communicate what's going to happen, which does raise the angst in people because of the newness and the mandated nature of it, and then it gets shifted, you know? So we need to be, you know, real thoughtful in what things have been changed, what things have really been true to the initial date out there, and I think be strategic to the reality of those things happening in the initial timeframes that the state's presenting to us, so.
So we'll be, just so that you know, this memo, we'll be talking about it again next week, and deciding at what point's the best time in which to get it out. Our principals have talked about it. Our, you know, language arts consultants have talked with folks about it as well. So that's really the one piece that we're paying attention today in regard to state mandates. We're continuing, obviously, to continue the implementation of our teacher eval plan. Our curriculum work is really in really a good place. I'll be sharing some of that work with the Subcommittee, the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee, you know, just work that was done at our middle school and our social studies, 8th grade social studies. It's really very, very good work. And I think the implementation of it this year will really give us some, you know, feedback on how well-written it was, and then to implement it and how well the kids do with it. So we're excited about that. But there's examples across our K-12 system of some really good written work that's been accomplished.
So as Erin shared, a lot of exciting elements happening and developing over the summer to get ready for the students in our classrooms and sitting in our seats and participating in the great education of Simsbury. So just wanted to give you a snapshot, excuse me, of where we were on the very first day of school, and our enrollment was 4,235 students. Our projected enrollment, 4,253, notice the little number reversal at the end there. And so we're very confident. Our projections are very close to the actual students in the seat, and actually, looking at the updated numbers even of last week, we've added some more students. So there, this is a time of flux, certainly, these first two weeks. And as you know, I do a much more detailed October 1 enrollment report, and I will share that with you. But again, just for a couple of highlights, K-6, we were projected to be 4,000, or I'm sorry, 2,049, so just seven off there. At the middle school, we're actually higher than projected. So our October 1 number, these are opening day numbers last year, but our October 1 number was 727, so we're actually up 14 there. And then over the course of the four grades, 9 through 12, slightly off our projections at 25. But again, overall, we're just slightly under our projections. But again, a much more detailed and enrollment deep dive for you after our October 1 report. And then finally, just wanted to give you a couple of highlights on school security. Of course, you know, as our little student told us in the opening video, good principals make sure that we're safe every single day. So of course, continuing to pay particular attention to our school security efforts. Joining us at our next Board of Education meeting will be both of our SROs, Officer Cushman, who will be returning as the SRO K-6, and to replace Officer Chase is Officer May, who joined the high school team and showing a lot of enthusiasm and excitement and involvement. So we're excited about how the SRO component of our collaboration with Simsbury PD will be progressing as it's related to school security. You know, it was great. I was at the middle school this afternoon for a faculty meeting, and Officer Cushman was outside, high-fiving all of the students, talking about their day, and that's exactly what we want to see, and those relationships forming. In addition, by state legislative guidelines, safety and security plans were due to the state. And although that there is a specific template that we had to share with the state, we were really, our work and our audit work with ERCM really validated and reinforced the movements that we had made specifically over the course of last year, putting new standard response protocols in place. And when we were sharing these security plans, definitely confident, and again, reinforced the good work that we're already doing. Some of our schools have already participated in their first lockdown drills, as I have described to the board prior. And so just a really great, solid foundation from which we are working from as we submit those safety and security plans to the state, and those were submitted at the beginning of August. In his next part here, Burke is also going to give an update on the relocation efforts of both, well, of Henry James, their main office, and the renovation of Squadron Line. So more on that in just a moment.
Okay. Before I start talking about those photos, I'm going to just ask to indulge a moment. Following the, I guess, recent history of the opening report, buried in there in my, in the handout, the very first thing is about the end-of-year fiscal status. But it's particularly noteworthy this year that we were able to stay within our budget, given the challenges that we updated the boards about throughout the last year in our quarterly budget reports for a series of unexpected costs. And we were able to finish with a positive balance, returning a small, roughly $2,750 of unexpended budget balance out of a almost $65 million budget. But it was particularly challenging, and I do want to give thanks not only to our accountant-budget analyst, Kira Sheehan, from our office, but all of the principals and department supervisors, who, when we asked for support, starting in January, to try to only, you know, spend on essential items, you know, there was support to defer certain purchases into the next year, and that all added up, and it all made it possible for us to make it through this most difficult year that I've seen in the six years that I've been in Simsbury. So that, that's a little bit of perspective that until we could really get ready for the new year, we had to close out and pay the bills for last year. So fortunately, we were able to do that. And now to speak a little bit with my thanks and support to Steve Twitchell, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, all his senior custodians and their staff. It's a very intense summertime. They always find a way to get everything done, and schools look great on opening day. We tried to highlight a few things from each school. The first here, we had some changes to the Simsbury High School Nurses Office that our staff were able to perform on an in-house basis. I don't have the after here, but you get the idea that they were able to create some privacy and some separation. Next slide, please. One of the larger, most visible projects at the...
An art class project.
Yes, somebody else mentioned that.
Thank you for picking up that.
While the track wasn't in bad shape, this is a picture of some of the evidence of cracks and things that were starting on this track. So, because it was our first synthetic track, we were advised with the architects who worked with both track and turf that it was the right time this summer to go ahead and do a re-coding before we really had to do more significant repair. So, the next couple of slides show that they were actually cutting out sections from the track that needed to be repaired. And then, ultimately, they do a structural spray, a resurface. And if you've been out recently, you've seen that they've restriped it. And we're essentially complete with the track resurfacing. So, that puts us in good stead for at least another five years. And then, the turf work has begun, and I haven't included any photos of that, but it is appearing to be ahead of our schedule. So, we're anxious to be able to open that facility also. And then, there's some bleacher repair work that is also supposed to happen tomorrow, beginning tomorrow. So, the field and the stadium area is really coming together nicely. Henry James, we have some new art room flooring. And one of the items that I didn't take a picture of was the, all the second-floor rooms have brand-new blinds. This is the second year, we were able to do the first floor last year, second floor this year. That's a big improvement. And go to the next slide, please. At Central School, I did showcase those shades. They're called clutch shades. So, these replaced the old vertical or horizontal blinds that would blow around and were always needing to be repaired.
The rattle.
And it made it difficult to darken the room for use of the smartboard. So, there's a multitude of reasons why, you know, we were finally able to, after the second year, complete all of those shades.
What are they called again?
Clutch shades. So, it's sort of the clutch mechanism that they go up and down with, is I believe where that comes from, so.
Interesting. That's great.
Then, with Latimer Lane, the largest transformation was, of course, the Phase 2 of our modular removal plan. So, you see the before, which is the second phase. We had taken down the white trailer. And then, now afterwards, one more slide beyond that. And it's a little different.
It wasn't saleable. We didn't get to resurface.
Yeah. So, we're back to the original building footprint.
That's great.
So, there was a lot of work involved with restructuring. And Carl, the senior custodian, did an excellent job of coordinating all of that. Sue and I were very impressed. Next slide, please. So, Squadron Line, an incredible amount of new flooring, the up-and-down ramps, as well as a portion of every classroom that is not, there's a portion that's carpeted and then a small portion that now has this tiled. And it's made a big difference.
The kids love walking up the yellow line, you know?
They do.
It keeps them right in.
Keeps them pace.
It looks great.
To hurt the friction derby without getting rid of the carpet.
Yeah, there's no more snapping.
Friction derby. Okay. And at Terrifil, you may recall, the board accepted the donation from the PTO in one of your last meetings in the spring. And we're able to expand the swings. And the next slide is a covered picnic area, which is some of the weather we've had recently. It was very well received, and I'm sure we're going to get a lot of use out of it. So, and last but not least, while you see a complete list in your packet of projects, this is the only school that's not on the public sewer. So, we have to maintain our septic system.
Really?
Because if it fails, it would be a real problem.
Oh, my gosh.
So, we've placed all of that infrastructure. And I give Steve credit for thinking ahead on those things. So, we're going to be comfortable knowing that the system is.
Working, working.
Well. So, that, again, is the buildings, the visible portion. One of the portions is not as visible. The systems tech IT staff were very busy with our virtualization project, adding, working to add servers, to upgrade memory of servers, to improve the overall experience for our users and teachers, especially for devices, for PCs that were virtualized that are in classrooms where running a projector, document camera, and things like that. So, we're excited that all that was able to happen this summer, as well as the new devices, the new Chromebooks that were deployed and were ready to go this fall. So, I want to thank all the staff and another great start to the year.
Thank you, Burke.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Yes, thank you, thank you. And so, as Sue mentioned, some of the other project work that's outlined for both Henry James and Squadron Line, once we were able to get the last funding in June, we then submitted a grant application for each of those projects to the State Department of Education, Bureau of School Facilities for a partial reimbursement. So, those applications have been submitted. And then, the Public Building Committee was busy this summer, and their role was to start with interviewing architectural firms. They've narrowed down a finalist for each of those jobs. And we're actually, along with the town engineer, the chairman of the Public Building Committee and myself, will be finalizing contracts to get the design portion started. And then, the goal for each of those is to have the work done, designed and done for next summer during that summer window. So, we're excited to start the design process. And I think that, yeah, that's everything.
Good, very good, very, thank you. Very conclusive report from the start of the school year. You all were very busy, the whole school system, extremely busy in a short window of time, only two months to now. So, and again, thank you to all the staff, custodians and everyone else that.
Did a great job getting things ready.
Absolutely, so.
Matt?
Yes.
Are there any openings or programs? Like, are there any outstanding openings right now or programs that aren't being delivered because, you know, we're missing a Spanish teacher or anything like that? I'm just, you guys are always amazing at putting all these puzzle pieces together.
Programs are fully up and running. The one vacancy that's not permanently filled at this point is the department supervisor for Art K-12. So, we've brought Cindy Rem back on an interim basis, so we haven't missed a beat there. You know, the position requires an O-92 or an administrative cert. It's actually not an area that a lot of art-certified teachers have gone into. So, when we opened up the pool, there just wasn't a wide variety. So, we're going to go back out in a few months and see where we are at that point. But I feel like we're moving, you know, we're moving forward with the person that really built the program in the first place, so we're okay.
Well, yeah, it's tough. And you want to do what's right for the, you can't lose any steam on that, so.
Value programs in the district for a long time.
Take the time and do what's thoughtful.
Other than that, we're fully staffed and ready to go.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on, we are on Exhibit 5, the Board of Finance's Five-Year Planning Committee.
Thanks, Lydia. I'm just going to ask Burke to give a quick overview of where we are in this process. There's an exhibit that kind of outlines, the Board of Finance has put together a charge, and I thought it was important that everybody got their eyes on the charge and had a level of comfort with that and had at least an opportunity to ask any questions that they might have. So, Burke, I'll kick that to you.
Thanks, Matt. So, this came out of conversations with the current Board of Finance members. They did some conversations about goals over a number of their monthly meetings. And then, they talked about the interest and importance of setting up a long-range planning committee with representation from Board of Selectmen and Board of Education. So, what is attached in your exhibit is the mission as was relayed to us from Peter Ascom. And it was helpful to see in more specific terms what their goals are. Both the finance director, Joe Mancini, myself, along with Mary Glassman and Matt, would be asked to participate as staff in looking forward at major drivers and high, kind of higher, higher-level issues that will impact the town budget process, town and more to Ed, and ultimately, our taxpayers. So, you have that in your packet. I will, I have started to and will be meeting again next week to do a sort of a draft of what some of the spreadsheets of some of these major drivers and how to try to project into the future, as well as looking for comparison purposes backwards, how that will help inform the work of the committee. A first meeting has not been set up yet, but I know that with the board being able to confirm its participation, then, you know, should be a chance to schedule and get something kicked off. So, if you have questions about here or things that I can help clarify, I will do my best.
They haven't scheduled a meeting yet, have they?
Correct. They have not. And they're, you know, after this meeting tonight, we'll be able to just sort of, you know, respond with any comments or questions and, you know, formally give them the representatives from Board of Education to start that process.
Good.
So, is this committee going to put forward recommendations for actions or are they?
We don't know.
We don't know what they're going to be doing?
You know, just to speak on it, Chris and I were asked to serve on it. We really, other than what's in here, we really don't know. And I think those are some of the questions we have. What's the mission statement? What are the boundaries of this committee? We don't want to see the committee duplicate work that's already been done by an enormous number of people. You know, it's described as a high-level committee. I think it's going to be up to the committee members to stay focused, keep the committee focused on high-level issues. We don't want to see, I don't think it's worthwhile to see that committee drill down into minutia. So, you know, we're going to have to see where this goes. I don't think we know a lot about it yet till the first meeting and some sort of organizational documents and mission statements and so on are drawn up. Chris, do you have any other thoughts?
Yeah, Susan, I see as potential results of this is a slightly more sophisticated spreadsheet than we currently use, kind of taking the lessons of the spreadsheet we've used the last five years.
Yeah.
Adding some things to it and maybe getting to the next level with it. And I think the other is also beginning to identify a little bit more consistently. You know, what are the measurements of the town being successful? What's the measurement of the school system being successful? And then, also, what are the financial measurements of being able to create that success in a fairly efficient way? So, I felt that the document that they put together was clearer than a lot of other things I've seen in the past. So, I felt very comfortable with it. I agree, Mike. I think there's a lot of different directions it can go. But that mission, to me, speaks to that. And that's really where I would like to focus energy on. I think there's a lot of value that can be brought to that process, so.
Yeah, I mean, from what I read, it almost looks like they're trying to get the boards to work together, almost from that capital end. Like, you know, we all have our projects out there, and then, we figure out what to do. And maybe more of a figuring out what actually works first.
Very good point.
Yeah, I like the idea that it's a longer-term view because we definitely get focused on next year's budget real quick, real fast, because we have to. So, this will be, you know, if it stays at a five-year view, I think that would be very helpful and instructive as to help guide us on a year-to-year basis.
I think another thing that will certainly make its way into these conversations, and we've been talking about, is what other model can we work on to demonstrate the relationship between staffing and enrollment? And I think that last year was a demonstration of a real effort by us to make the best, most responsible decisions we could based on our projected enrollment. And we use the term responsible reductions of staff that didn't negatively impact program. And it was not one of the larger projected declines we've seen in recent years. And I think that we need to demonstrate both kind of the pros and cons of making those decisions. You know, we, for the first time, now have some class-size issues to grapple with at Henry James because of an unexpected spike in enrollment that came the other way. So, I think it's an opportunity to demonstrate both, yes, what works when you utilize those projections to make staffing decisions, and simply the other way, what can happen if you see an influx of students in a particular grade. So, we've talked about different ways, maybe to slice that than just the overall, hey, we've gone down 50 at elementary. We've gone, you know, you can slice that across grade level and demonstrate year-over-year what that looks like. You can do that by school and paint a picture, a different picture. I mean, we talked about that last year, but I think we got to do a little bit better job of showing what that looks like numerically. So, we've been, Sue and I have really been thinking through that, and I think we have some ideas and some different ways to move forward with that. Because that's always the first question we need to respond to, and it makes sense because of the trend.
Yeah, I think the notion of doing some long-term planning around the operating budget's a good idea, no question. And I think that if nothing else comes out of this committee except sort of better communication and better understanding, then it's well worth doing. And let's see where it goes. As long as we can stay out of the weeds and stay focused on that, I think we're in good shape.
You know, I think, Susan, you actually give a really good example, which is the capital planning process, which is different today than it was five years ago. And I think we all agree, it's much more disciplined, there's better integration, it's better tied to long-term measurements. And I think everyone feels a lot better about it and the end result's a lot better. So, if there are elements of our planning and annual process that can kind of get to the next level of discipline like that, then I think that will be a good end result, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. All right. I look forward to, look forward to the comments after the first meeting, so, thank you. We are now on to Exhibit 6, Review of the Board of Education Subcommittee Assignments. As you know, every year at this time, at our first meeting, we review the committees that are stated in your packet here. And I will give you a few days to look at this. Let me know if there are any changes, if you feel that you would like to remain on the committees that you're presently serving or want to change, then email me and let me know where we sit with this. So, we do not have to make a decision tonight or whatever, as it is. And as you see, the four standing committees and then the temporary committees. And now, one of them will be the committee that we just spoke about in our previous exhibit, and then, our liaisons to the administrative committees. All right, so if you have any questions, let me know. All right. And I think we are at the end of our meeting. All right, very good. All right. With that, any members of the audience wishing to address us? Seeing none. All right. I also like to thank SCTV for their continued service, again, for taping our meetings and showing them. So, without their volunteerism, we wouldn't be able to deliver our message of our school system, especially when we have very good information reports about our school system. All right. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 23rd here. And with that, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Thank you and good evening.